Seventy dollars and ninety-four cents from the Wyndham Township demolition project. The bids for that one came in lower than half as much as what we anticipated. So what I was thinking about doing was moving that money over to this particular project to help offset the costs needed to-
The gap in the-
Yeah. And the, uh, what do you want to call it? Child, uh, what do you want to call them? Porch Department Industry Council, they've agreed to contribute the difference in the cost, which would end up being about twenty, well, over twenty-one thousand for them and to close that gap that we needed. They also, the city of Ravenna has requested, instead of using a six-inch water line, that they use an eight-inch during construction, and they have agreed to contribute-
Six thousand.
-the cost of the material for that increase in the size of the line. We have scheduled a public hearing for the fourteenth of November, as required, in order to officially move the money over. I've already contacted the state and they said to go ahead and proceed, so.
Okay, well, you answered my question. I had a question on why the discrepancy in the differences of the money, but this was the balance.
Yeah.
And you're just moving the whole balance.
Moving the whole balance over. That way we can close that gap in less for Porch Loan Center or Porch Tribe Administration Council, whatever you want to call them, to, less for them to come up with, so.
There's correspondence in the city.
Yeah, there is a letter that has to go to the state-
It's in here.
... requesting the movement of the money. And like I said, the public hearing, which is the second part of it, will be the fourteenth of November.
So do we have this letter to sign today?
Yeah.
Amanda, I learned, okay.
You can do it, whatever, whatever you need. My biggest need is just a letter.
Supporting it and then it gets approved by the state.
Yeah, they officially have to amend it to the state system, the amendment request. But once that happens and they receive the letter, which is moved, they will actually send paperwork, once it's approved, for you guys to come up on.
Okay.
That's how it was in the past, unless they've changed it. Because they're trying to move everything electronically, you know, so. That's it for me.
All right, so-
Brink's a plan.
The comprehensive plan is next. So we asked for costs to do the comprehensive plan and gave it a very brief summary, to be honest with you, as what it would be, you know, provide a better scope of services once you agree to, agree that this makes sense to you. So, discussing this before, we were talking about the cost being around a hundred thousand dollars. That's probably on the low side, but I worked and worked and worked, and if we work smart at it, we can do three hundred thousand dollars. And we owe you money, but we, you guys, when I say you guys, the county commissioners did pay to our debt service payments in two thousand seven and again in two thousand ten, for a total of sixty-two thousand plus dollars. So the idea here would be to take one of those debt service payments, that's thirty-one thousand, seven eighty-nine, and apply it against the hundred thousand dollars, as well as you get technical assistance, our membership, and so you can utilize, if we saw under an agreement prior to two, you know, to twenty-twenty, we can use what's left in two thousand eighteen, all of two thousand nineteen, and all of two thousand twenty, if you so desire, and that would be an additional twelve thousand, seven hundred and thirty bucks. So that would bring our adjusted cost down to fifty-six, three-three-eight. It would be an hourly, not to exceed, so if, let's say, we really were smart and got it done earlier than that, you know, we track all of our time, so you'd know, then it might even be less than that, but at this point, I think this is a pretty, a pretty conservative number. The other thing, too, is if we do go forward with it, I don't think I can, I don't know if our agency can really beat a forty-three thousand dollar, forty-five thousand dollar cost, so if we do go for it, I'd like to do a dollar, you know, a dollar for dollar kind of thing, so for every, until we pay off what we owe you, so we have some money coming in.
Well, I have a question on the TA hours because we're two hundred and five, twelve thousand just doesn't seem like a lot of value when we pay like a hundred and fifty thousand a year, and other communities pay way less and get, so how are we coming at that?
Well, that's in our bylaws, it's been in the bylaws forever, so if you want, and I understand, because that was Streetsboro's argument, to be honest with you. Streetsboro's argument was they're paying eleven thousand dollars a year and they're getting seventy-five dollars, because our bylaws say-
Seventy-five hours, right?
Seventy-five hours.
Okay.
Sorry, seventy-five hours, our bylaws cap out at seventy-five hours, seventy-five hours for communities over ten thousand people or something like that. So, that, that is a problem. Okay, I see that, because for Streetsboro, it came out to like a hundred and sixty dollars an hour for them, and for you guys, it's like, you know, like a thousand dollars or more, so, two thousand dollars, whatever it is. So that, that is, so we can, we can amend our bylaws to give you more TA hours, but then we also have to give, you have to give those projects to use your TA hours, I'm sure you'll probably want to do now, but you shall wish yours.
But see, that's, that's my problem, because we're the biggest contributor at a hundred and fifty thousand, I think it is, Todd, is that what we pay a year?
A hundred and fifty thousand a year, roughly.
A hundred and fifty thousand a year, and we get seventy-five hours, which we never utilize, so it's just there. And then when we want to use them for three years, for two hundred and five TA hours, it only equates to twelve thousand dollars. So that, it doesn't seem, the math doesn't work for me, for, I mean-
How is that calculated, Todd, for two hundred and five hours, I mean?
Two hundred and five hours is, is the time that me and Gail would put, put together, so I'd basically average out both of our times and the time's about two oh five, so I figured that out.
Two oh five is how many hours we pay off.
Right.
Of straight accumulation of, I understand that.
But in some ways, it means we're paying almost four hundred and fifty thousand for the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, because we don't utilize, I mean, you know what, we, we do it as a service, but when I break down, if we pay a hundred and fifty thousand a, a year, and we only get seventy-five hours, we're paying like two thousand an hour. So how is our TA hours only worth twelve thousand dollars for the balance of eighteen and nineteen and twenty?
Right, well, that, it just, that's our bylaws, so we have to amend our bylaws.
Okay. I mean, I'm not getting a hard time, it just doesn't, the math doesn't work for me when I see what we invest every year.
Has this ever been discussed before, Todd? Is that, I don't remember it ever coming up.
No, no, it doesn't appear to have been discussed, you know.
You mentioned Streetsboro brought it up, but the key is, the county has really never utilized regional planning for its own purposes. We've always understood that we're subsidizing the greater county. The question becomes, though, when we actually want a product, it, it suddenly becomes an extra charge on top of what are already the blind share of the dues that we pay. It seems like there needs to be a better system there to work it out, because the reality is, if you wanted to just look at it financially-
Oh, wow.
-we should quit being a member, hire our own staff, or pay outside for them to do the comprehensive plan, and we would have saved a lot of money. And I'm not suggesting we do that, but what I'm saying is that it always seems to work out to the kind of disadvantage, last year we paid fifty thousand extra on top of our dues. It's just always any time we really do want anything of purpose done, we end up paying even more on top of it, and it does get frustrating, particularly when other departments are being told no on their requests.
Okay, time out. So, what's frustrating to me is I am running an agency that only covers half, dues only cover half our budget. I have to come up the other half, and I don't, you could tell me where I'm going to come up the other half, that is extremely difficult to do. If the county wants to take over our agency, it's a three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand dollar hit to the county, I mean, I am trying to work with you guys, and I'm getting attacked on, on, on this stuff that's never been attacked before.
No, no, you're, you're not getting attacked, Todd.
Oh, I feel like I'm getting attacked?
Well, we're just asking questions, because you, you understand, we have the financial obligations to the taxpayers.
You do.
And like I said, I was shocked to see that our two hundred and five TA hours only equated to twelve thousand. That's, that is my question.
Right, and it's, and I understand that, I understand.
I'm not-
Some of the townships don't, you know, like, I'm going to use Sugar Bush, because they're the easiest one to think about, they have a hundred and thirty members, they pay, or a hundred, excuse me, a hundred and seventy-seven people pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year, they get twenty-five hours no matter what, and that comes out to five dollars an hour for us, you know, and so there's, there's some places get, some communities benefit from the, from it greatly, and then some, like Streetsboro themselves, don't.
But, but see, that, that's our concern, because we are supplementing all these other communities for a service we pay for, but we never actually utilize, and it's not that we have-
What's the answer?
Yeah.
Have an issue, well, the issue is, is-
I know the issue.
Is-
What's the answer?
I, I don't know, I mean, I would think that we would get a bigger credit, but how does that, for TA hours?
But the problem is, again, if you want, like, let's say, hey, just do the complex for, for, as per a hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year, I, I understand that argument for dollar for dollar, blah, 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 but then I still have to not only do a, a plan for a hundred thousand dollars, and come up another a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on the side somewhere. So, you know, it's just, it's just not going to work that way, you know?
Yeah, well, well, I under, I understand I can't do that, but I guess I was looking at that, and, and the only thing that brought it to my attention was, for two hundred and five TA hours, we were only getting a twelve thousand dollar credit. That, that was my, my concern. When we pay a hundred and fifty thousand a year, we never utilize our hours, and then when we want to utilize it, we, we only get credit for twelve. That's my question.
And I get that, I get that, that's, that's clear, that's mine. However, when you have an issue like this, we have to come up with a solution, and what do you suggest is a solution? Do we want to take over that department? Is that what we want to do?
I did not say that at all.
No.
I'm, I'm looking to Todd, what he could be work-
Well, he just told you, though, he's coming up with this other money, so he's asking for direction as to what to do.
So, so-
Well, I'm asking from him what, what we could do to work this out.
And he's asking you for direction.
Vicky, let me deal with this, okay?
So the way, the way this would work would be-
I do get it, Sabrina. Okay, then, just let me deal with this.
The only way, the only way-
We both have to deal with it. Okay, go ahead, Todd, just a-
No, the, the, I won't even argue, the, the, the bylaws are, they're what we're following, following the bylaws that are approved by the poll board, and that's what we're following. And that's what, you get, and you, and we just use, we charge back, if we go over hours, or we usually, user hours, we would charge, whatever our staff is working on that project, we charge their rate. So in this case, you're utilizing our, we're trying to figure out a way to reduce your, your costs, and so it's just, you know, combined, mine and Gail's time would probably be the primary people on the plan, and reduce it by that amount. The way to fix that, to give a better, better return to your investment, would be to change the bylaws to something more, more, more reasonable, whether it's a hundred hours or a hundred and twenty-five hours.
And that's what I was getting at, that's why I wanted to see what-
You could do that.
We could work out.
It's still not equitable, it's not still a dollar.
I understand that, Sabrina, I'm a numbers person, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Okay, so then, Todd, if we were to change it equitable, then, does that mean you would have to increase the cost to the other subdivisions that are memberships?
No, I would, I would, I wouldn't increase the cost to other members, I would just give you a better return on your-
On our investment.
Your, your investment. And it may have been better if we would, if, if we had changed them, it may have made Streetsboro want to stay as a member, because they, they looked at it at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour as too much for them. They could hire their own consulting firm, basically, theirself, so.
And that's what Sabrina's saying, well, we could hire our own consulting firm and get this cheap-
I didn't say that.
But I mean, that, no, you didn't say that, but you're saying we-
But I'm, like I said, my whole question was, is, is how, for two hundred and five hours, we, we only got the twelve thousand, I'm thinking we, we should get a better rate on our return.
But if we get this plan for free, Todd's concern is, how does that work?
I'm not asking for it for free, I mean, I sit on the board, I, I, I get this, but my thing is, for the money that we are putting in there, I would think that when we, and we'd never use our hours, and we are the biggest investors, that when we do go to utilize it, I would think that they would be repellent to work with us, because we do subsidize everyone, basically, for this. And that's what I'm asking, looking out for the county's interest, you know, I would think that we would just be able to get a bigger credit than just twelve thousand. That's, that was my question.
Right.
And, and you answered it in the bylaws, so it sounds like we would have to take a look at the bylaws, because, and I'm not talking moving somewhere, I, I'm just bringing this up, that, yeah, that's an option, but I'm not even presenting that option, I just want a bigger bank for our buck for the money that we're putting in there, I, I would think that we would be able to get twelve thousand.
Well, if you change the bylaws, you, you would obviously, let's say, it's up to the board to decide what they want to change, I think, too. Or you could change the bylaws to a hundred, or even as high as a hundred and fifty hours, I don't think that's a problem, and you know, I mean, there's got to, it can't be dollar for dollar, though, I mean, this won't work, you know?
But at the same thing, no matter how many hours we get, we don't utilize them, except for something like this, so-
I think, well-
I mean-
I've talked with Todd before about some, certain things, like the low, low to moderate income surveys that could be done, there's a lot of things we could be doing differently, you know, the, the grant writer stuff, doing that under a TA hour system, you know, to some extent. So there, there are things that we could do that utilize your TA hours, it's just not, you know, you-
But is that gonna, is that gonna solve your problem about?
No, no, it's just, but it is giving back for your, your investments, giving something back to you guys, which you deserve.
But when you, when you need money, where do you go?
I haven't, I haven't-
You have to come to us, Todd.
I do have to come to you, and I try not to, you know?
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, what you're saying, if you give us more hours and anything, I understand exactly what Sabrina's saying, but I also understand the situation.
Right.
So I'm thinking, we're addressing symptoms and not the root of the problem, is what we're talking about, we're talking about symptoms.
You know, back to the bylaws.
Can you give us this plan for free?
No.
Okay.
And no one's asking it for free, I'm just asking for, it, it just, I was amazed that-
What do you think, what do you think would be?
I, I, that's why I was asking, because when I saw two hundred and five hours and, and when we pay a hundred and fifty a year, so over three years, that was four hundred and fifty.
And it's been that way forever.
And, and my question is, is, I guess I was just shocked at the amount that almost three years worth of TA hours equated, when, and that, that was my question, is that, Todd, yes, Todd?
Why, I'm sorry, but if we gave RPC a hundred thousand a day for our comprehensive plan, would you guys hire additional staff to do it?
I don't think we, I think we have the staff in house to do it, but-
So, the plan really doesn't cost a hundred thousand, then. Running their department costs what running their department costs, and the question is, do they have enough additional time within a year, and what does that look like? We're getting hung up on how much their average salary is per hour and how many hours, but it comes down to, well, what else do they need their time for to make up that other half of their income? Versus, and, and that's where you find the room for, is there time within a year or two years to do this, what additional help is needed? I mean, that's what it comes down to, the plan really doesn't cost a hundred thousand. The plan costs whatever it costs them in terms of work effort to put forth.
Well, that is the cost, though, the, the, the work effort. So, for example, back to Todd's point, I, I hear what you're saying, but then, you know, we are, we are actively hunting for projects to help other communities with, right? So if I am, if we're bogged down on your project, I don't have to actively hunt for more projects to cover our, our, you know, the hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy-five thousand that I have to make up. So, so his, his point is true, but then, as, you know, you know, if, if you guys didn't do the comp plan, just like you haven't done the comp plan since I've been here, we, we find other places for the money to come from, I mean, it's, you know?
So that's how that works. I guess it comes, to me, it comes down to time, if half of your department is funded through dues, then half of your time presumably could be devoted to those dues, if you add up the technical hours for every community, it doesn't seem to me like it's coming to half the time of the department, but those are places you could start looking at to see how the more equitably do it, in my mind.
Then we, yeah, so, so, we use a lot of the TA, we do, we do use a lot of TA hours, we don't always use all of them, in several of the communities, we do use of all their TA hours, we have several communities right now that we've gobbled up all their hours and et cetera. But then we, then we have, you have the subdivision that come in, and we have other projects that come in that we have to do, plus the rezonings that come in, the text amendments that come in, and then there's just, we, we assist the county, you know, assist the, you know, even though we don't have grants, we do assist with grants still, or a lot of the townships and that, I just had, yours filling yesterday, they have two grants they want us to help them with. So we, we, you know, our time gets sucked up doing that kind of stuff, some of that's TA hours, some of that's not, but, you know, a lot of the time is, you know, yeah, the TA hours, I think the TA hours, the purpose of the TA hours was to establish a standard budget, you know, something that's for us to at least start from. And so, you know, I mean, that was the point of it, the point of the TRs wasn't necessarily to, you know, I don't want to say unequitable, but it was, the idea was just to have a base budget for us to work with and then to build from. And then it's, and we can add more time, you know, if they don't use it, they don't use it, I understand that, but at the same time, we, I, I ask the townships all the time, how can we help you, and what can we do, you know? And I even, you know, I think we even talked to you guys about it, I mean, we've been hoping and hoping and hoping that you guys would want to do a comp plan, you know, because that would really be a great way to, to utilize and, and provide a service to you guys.
Well, and, and as you explained just before, the advantage of the comp plan, I mean, we're, we're one of the few counties that do not have a comp plan.
That's true.
So, and we need to have one, and, and like I said, you know, at fifty-six thousand, you feel is, is the narrowest that you can get that down?
No, the narrowest I think is, is a hundred thousand, but I can, I can, if you, listen, I am not trying to stick it to the commissioners here, so if you guys want, if you guys want me to, to reduce it down to a straight, like, half-half, you know, that's fine with me, but, you know, I don't want, I don't want, I can't get, get really below fifty thousand dollars of this, because it's just going to, we're looking at, at least, you know, like I said, as an hour per hour, if we don't use all the hours, you don't pay us, right? So let's, but you would, you will get, you know, your hours that we owe you from the TA hours, and you will get your hours that we owe you from the debt service. So, so what I'm saying is that there's a possibility-
But that's, that's still our money, though, I mean, we're still paying, even though you're showing it subtracted the debt service payment, really, this, this plan is, is costing us more than, it's costing us truly the hundred thousand, because, like you said, but the thirty-one, seven eighty-nine for the debt service, that is money that you owe us, so really, the only thing we're gaining advantage of from our dues is that twelve thousand.
Well, what I'm trying to say is that, what I was trying to say before you, you've mentioned all that, is that I, I can go as low as fifty thousand dollars on this, on this project, you know, as, as far as getting, you know, still being able to make sure that I'm not burning my, burning my staff out and/or burning, you know, our financial needs out, but I can go to fifty to help you guys feel better about the fact that you, you know, feel like you haven't gotten an equitable amount of money in your returns, but all the money you've paid us. But I think if I go below that, I, you know, that's really just going to chew us up, you know?
Well, and that's all I'm asking, is, is what can you work with this? Because it just seems like, like I said, and I've said a hundred times, say, you know, for three years of TA hours and for what we're paying, I guess I was surprised that it only equated to a twelve thousand dollar credit.
Sure.
And that, that's my concern.
So we'll have, we'll have the top thing, it's up to the board to talk about how we adjust that to make, you know, get, you know, give you a better return on that, but at the same time, really, the, the point of that, those hours' work is to set a base, and the other point of setting up of that was, so one community, like Brimfield, for example, doesn't use up more than their time, and then we're, we're, we're actually working for Brimfield, not to pick on Brimfield, but we're working for Brimfield and we're not working for the rest of the communities, the other reason was that after a certain amount of usage, there then becomes an additional cost to the community, so that way they don't over, overuse us, and they're, they're more responsible with ours, yeah, responsible with our time, so the other communities have access to us as well.
And, and as far as the comp plan, though, shouldn't it, some of the work already be like pre-done, having you done, like, comp plans for certain communities, Todd, I mean, wouldn't that help with-
A lot of, a lot of, a lot of the work has been done, a lot of the work can be gathered relatively quickly, the biggest cost is, and, and nobody really knows or understands this unless you've done it, is the biggest cost is actually going out and meeting with different groups.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And then you come back, you, you prepare for those meetings, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's, it actually does, because then they come, then they say, what about this, what about this, what about this, and then you go back and you research those things for them, and those, you know, sometimes it's a couple of days to research some of the stuff they're asking for, or they want to see the material that's shown a different way, or add to that material, and then you do all that, and then you go back to them, and they, they look at it, and they're like, oh, okay, now what about this, this and this, you know, so we're, your council is making adjustments. One of the things, you know, as far as doing the plan, I think, you know, you need a comprehensive plan steering committee, which one of you, at least one of you should be on that steering committee, and then a representative from each city should be on that, that committee, probably two of the villages should be on there, a couple of the, the larger townships should be on the committee, as well as a couple of the rural townships should be on the committee, on the steering committee.
And I would be interested in being on the committee, because like I said, this has been one of the things that I felt like that we, we need, and in talking to other peers and stuff, we're one of the few that, that don't have it, and then talking to you, you know, we've never had one, but I know, um, Jogga County, I know you've been on that one, their successful bidder for their comprehensive plan came in at ninety-eight thousand, that's the one they went with, but I, I was just talking to them, that's, you know, so we're, we're comparable as far as the cost for them.
And what's different about them is they already have a plan, so they're just updating their plan.
They're just updating, okay.
They're not rewriting it, so that, so they already have a base to work with, we have to create all our data, you know, we create the data, put the data in a usable standard. The other thing, too, that makes the townships, villages, cities all nervous about this, is they don't want us to have a plan that's going to change their lives, right? So what we're trying to do with the plan is create, create the big overarching vision for them, the values to that, and we want to incorporate their portions of their plans into the documents, so it doesn't, it doesn't conflict with what they're doing.
I remember when you gave us the description and stuff, and that was one of the things to point out to the, the political subdivision, is we're not coming in and trying to tell you, you know, we want to encumber your, your plan into the county plan, not necessarily-
Right, which is why, which is why that steering committee that we're going to talk to, that we're reporting, should include those communities, because I think they'll all have a chance to, first off, they'll be able to protect their own communities so it's safe, but they'll also be able to see other ideas that are happening out throughout the county, maybe some of those ideas, they should be incorporating in their community, you know what I mean, they just, they just haven't thought about it or haven't, like, reached out.
And actually, I think it would be a good thing, and for those communities that maybe don't have it, it might get them in the mindset of thinking, you know, to look at why.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, so, okay, so I think the question is, are you, are you willing to go with fifty thousand dollars or a, a scope of service, and then you can improve a, a contract or some sort of, a, a, a understanding or something like that, so you can move forward?
I'm going.
I would encourage you to put this in with the rest of your budget discussions, we have a lot of questions before you, including almost two million dollars for the sheriff that you have yet to give an answer to. I would find it difficult to give an answer here and not provide others to know.
Okay, so we're going to put it on our-
Your list, okay, sounds fair.
And I would keep you posted.
Okay, so we have another topic.
Yes.
All right, so did you guys all get a copy of this?
You know what, I thought you were advised not to do this.
Who?
You.
I was advised not to do this, I was, sort of, but my board also asked me to look into the numbers and provide them the numbers, so I did this, and I, and I know some who advised me not to do that, other than maybe Todd, but, and the other reason why I chose to take it to my board still is because, first off, I work for my board, and the second thing is, I feel really, you know, as, as the director of region planning, I feel like this is an additional burden that we're placing on the, on the commissioners to take over our debt, if we just were to walk away from the debt service stuff. So we did get the numbers to show my board and decide what we wanted to do, and so what I, and I provided them, we worked, we worked with both Hometown Bank and Porch Community Bank. Basically, we owe approximately two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, you know, sixty-two, sixty-three dollars, sixty-three thousand dollars of that is owed to the commissioners from agents you guys have paid, and then there was the closing cost, if we were due to closing cost, we're going to be additional twenty-six hundred, but then we were also be additional twenty-six hundred, um, but then we were also talking as part of the refinance, giving you back, so we're giving you back one part of your debt service with the comp plan, and then we're gonna get, and then we're gonna do the refinance, giving you back your other thirty-one thousand dollars. So actually, we're gonna help the commissioners out as best we could. But that would leave us with a, a loan amount of one, of one ninety-three, and we looked at a ten-year and a, and a fifteen-year loan, um, and basically, you know, we could be, at a fifteen-year loan, it'd be fourteen hundred dollars or seventeen thousand dollars a year annually for the refund planning commission. And so that would be, you know, we currently are paying almost thirty-two thousand, so it's like a, it's roughly a fourteen thousand-plus savings if we were to continue to hang on to billing ourselves. When I presented this information to our board, Sabrina, and the exec, and then I say the board, I'm just really saying the executive committee, the executive committee listened to what Sabrina had said, which is basically similar with Todd had shared with me. I just, again, you know, my, my argument with the executive committee was that I don't wanna burden the commissioners, this is money that you guys didn't plan on spending. Um, you know, that's just, it's contrary to my beliefs, but I'm not, that's my belief. My board, however, said, "Well, if the commissioners wanna take it on, then let them, let the commissioners take it on."
Well, well, I think, I think the thought process is, is, you know what, that building probably is not gonna sell for what it's owed. So ultimately, the commissioners are gonna have to make up that balance, because it's, it's in our name. Why add additional debt of, of the closing costs and stuff when our hopes is to try to move this thing as soon as possible and get it off the books? And even though you say it's staying at twenty thousand, it's not, it's just moving it to a different mortgage. I mean, and in the end, whatever we're short on that sales price, we're gonna make up. So why make up a shortage, a projected shortage, which we don't know, but we have a feeling it's gonna be short, and then take on additional closing costs to finance something? I mean-
Right.
And I appreciate your thought process.
I do, but it's gonna fall on us anyway, Todd. You really can't prevent it.
But we're trying to prevent it.
I know that.
I was trying, I was trying to prevent it. My board has said to go with Sabrina's suggestions, is what my board, and that's what, I represent my board, so I had to go with-
And it's not necessarily my, my suggestion, it's just-
Your suggestion was to refinance?
No, no.
Not the whole.
Or, but then I still, then I still gave this to you all, because if the county was to refinance it anyway, you'd still save, you'd still be paying thirty-one thousand on December first, you'll only be paying whatever that, whatever that amount was, eleven thousand or something like that.
I think we're hoping to move this, like-
Yeah. And, and really, it's, we're not saving money, it's just being moved to the new loan. And I think that's the mindset you gotta get, because instead of paying the thirty-one thousand dollar payment-
Well, the money hasn't gone, I mean, the loan hasn't gone away, I understand that.
I know.
But at the same time, I'm just looking at this year, our budget, we only budgeted a half payment, because we thought we sold it by now?
And it's the same interest rate, so we're not gaining anything, right? I thought it was four.
No, the interest was four, the interest rate on the old, older loan was forty, or forty-seven-five. So it's a, it's a lower rate, but, but yeah.
Closing costs, that-
Give it extended time.
Give it extended time. We push everything to the future, hoping we sell the building, you know, sooner than later.
Right. So I think you have to hold a, a building probably five years or so to, to make that work, and we're not gonna hold it that long.
Well, and the key to understand, the county owes USDA. Regardless of what, regardless of what else you do, RPC owes the county, and they owe the county two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, regardless of what we pay to USDA. The county has every right to re-establish, reconfigure the loan that we have with RPC.
Right.
If you guys wanna lower those payments for the next months or years-
Right.
While the building sells, you're welcome to do that, because you're welcome to defer those payments until that building sells.
Right.
We don't need an outside funding source to do that, and we're still gonna have to pay USDA the forty thousand that we owe them, regardless of what money we get.
The thirty-one thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to-
I know. And, and we appreciate that, Todd, and like I said, but from our perspective, I, I understand it makes it more palatable for you guys to pay us, but in the end, we're gonna be the ones on, on the line, and so, and, and we understand there's gonna be issues, but we truly appreciate it. And I even told you at the meeting, I, I understand, I mean, we wish more people were like you. I mean, you're thinking, like, like yourself, or as a business person, you don't wanna, you know, screw the county, but you're really not. We, we need to, um, maybe take a look, Todd, then, where are we at? Because I don't think we had it in the budget to make that payment this year, remember? Because we were hoping that that place would be sold, so-
We, we do have, in our budget, we had a, a half payment. So we, we lower fifteen thousand, almost sixteen thousand, our budget, pay a half payment, then you can be sold before we got to December two.
Okay.
So that's what we had.
So, if we were to recalculate the payment from you coming to the commissioners, obviously we'll still have to pay the full payment. That would work? Because, do you have the additional money for the full payment? Because like I said, I don't recall seeing that in the budget, because we were planning on not having it, so-
No. But if you're gonna ask for the full payment, then I'd rather go to the financing and save seventeen thousand or twenty thousand dollars this year.
We, we don't wanna-
Yeah, but, yeah, very, the opportunity's there.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I look at, because if we save the twenty thousand this year, the seventeen thousand, the twenty thousand, all next year's already paid for, just the thirty-one thousand, we're talking about paying in December. So that's part of that.
Right. But then you'll have monthly payments going forward.
I know, but, but again, if you had to pay the thirty, if you're gonna ask us for thirty-one thousand dollars now, I could take that thirty-one thousand dollars, especially over two years, you know?
Well, where's the other, I guess, I don't understand, where's the other hundred-and-sixty thousand go?
What hundred-and-sixty thousand?
We owe two-hundred-and-twenty-two.
Right.
You're gonna refinance and pay the county thirty-one.
Right. Now, what I did, what I took out-
Where's all the other money sitting?
I'm not sure where it, okay, so, so what, we owe USDA is a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand?
Okay.
We owe the USDA a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand.
Well, the county owes USDA, you owe the county a hundred-and-fifty.
All right, if that's how you wanna talk about it. So we owe the county a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand for just the loan on USDA, then we owe the county an additional sixty-two, sixty-three thousand. Thirty-three thousand of that, or thirty-one thousand of that was gonna go to the comp plan, and we're gonna reimburse it that way. The other thirty-one thousand, we'd get, we would get from the loan, and, uh, see, we would get from the loan and pay it back to the commissioners. So I have, I have, yeah.
So then the county would be getting a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand.
Well, yes, we're, after thirty-one plus the one-fifty-eight, but yeah, you'd get the, the commissioners get their payment back, um, and then we still would owe the USDA one-fifty-eight.
But you would turn that money over right then for us to pay? I don't understand what that one-fifty-eight is at.
Okay, so the one-
And that may not matter for what I'm gonna do, but I'm just-
The one-fifty-eight is what, we currently owe the USDA, so if we got, if they gave us two-hundred, if they gave us, um, a hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars minus, you know, because the two-twenty-two is, is the sixty thousand dollars, the sixty-plus thousand that we owe the commissioners, right? Then we take thirty-one thousand dollars out for the comp plan, and then the other thirty, then another thirty-one thousand dollars would go to the commissioners directly. We still owe USDA the one-fifty-eight, but technically our loan is for one-thirty, uh, one-ninety-three, and, and, uh, we would be refinancing one-ninety-three, the amount that we owe USDA plus the thirty-one thousand that we owe the commissioners. So the commissioners have their money back, we have, we have our debt at one-ninety-three, our, our payments at fifteen years is, is fourteen-thirty-three a month, or seventeen thousand, one-ninety, one-ninety-seven versus thirty-one-eighty-nine. Yes, yes, that money hasn't gone away, the hundred-and-ninety-three hasn't gone away, but it's been pushed into the future, but if we can sell that building into the future, that would be great. The other thing about fourteen-ninety, fourteen-thirty-three that's good is we have four office spaces. If, if one or two are the big office spaces, that would cover our, our payment, you know, basically, if we sorted them both, now we have money for, you know, the, the other miscellaneous things that go on with the building, you know, maintenance and things like that. So, um, it really is not a horrible plan, I mean, a horrible idea that we came up with. But when my board heard the idea that the county would just take everything over, my board instructed me to let that happen, so.
I don't think it was take everything over, I think that we were being advised that to refinance the debt would not be to our advantage, it would just add on to the possibility of losses that we may accrue when that building sells anyways, because I don't think there's gonna be enough to cover the first and the second on there. So we, we're trying to, you know, reduce the amount that we're gonna-
And we're gonna negotiate your payment, Todd, because I know you're, you're in a cash flow, is what you're thinking of right now, and I understand that.
Sure.
But that can be negotiated, so.
And that's what I, I was saying, in the budget, at the beginning, we didn't have a payment in there, because we were thinking it was gonna, and then, so we put in a half a payment.
We have, we do have money in the budget, we do have the money for the half payment, we just don't have the money in the budget for the full payment. We have the changer, but we have to remember budget and put the money in there.
Okay, so-
But then if you, then if you're biggest pay the thirty-one thousand, that's twenty thousand more that it would have cost if you were to really refinance.
Todd, what does that payment do? You and Todd.
December first.
That's when we pay RPC, can pay us whenever.
Okay. So Todd, if we were to, to accept a half a payment from, um, RPC, where is that?
I mean, in my mind, it's the building. Get rid of the building.
Yes, yes.
I have no problem with you suspending all payments until the building sells-
Right.
But then let's put it up, let's put it up without an minimum, and let's be done with it.
Yes.
Let's figure out what our loss is, and then let's calculate. If we sell it for a hundred-and-fifty, then we figure out what to do with the extra sixty that RPC loads us, and we send a five thousand dollar check to USDA to cover the difference there, and, and we deal with it, we're done.
Well, hopefully, whatever the losses RPC can make up to us, then, through payments, you know, since we're given, like, free rent, I mean, you won't have any debt, so we could make those manageable payments for whatever the losses-
Well, that's something where you wanna take that sixty thousand and put it towards the comprehensive plan, and then they pay us back two thousand every year for thirty years, we can do that. I mean, it's, it's our arrangement.
Todd's thinking about the expenses of that building going on and on.
Oh, yeah. Well, plus, we've had some issues there, so we just need to get it.
We need to cut it.
Joanne, where are we at? Because I think the board had, you lowered-
Evidently, you lowered the cost again, but I'm, I need to meet with, evidently Jim DePaul wants to talk to me about selling it again.
Does he have someone?
I don't know what is exactly his question is, but we don't have a choice, we have to follow the RISE code.
Yeah, and Chris has made that clear.
And as long as you guys have a minimum set, it's, it's-
Well, that's why I don't understand what the key track is.
Right now, all we're doing is paying a lot of advertising fees, because we're not getting anybody to bid.
What do you suggest, Todd? I'm seriously-
I mean, my recommendation is put it up with no minimum. You still have the opportunity to reject bids.
Right.
If you get a dollar bid, and that's your highest, you can say, "No, you know what, maybe we don't wanna sell it." Put it up with no minimums and see what people are willing to offer.
What do we have to do to do that? Does the board have?
Just Joanne putting it out.
Well, I'll, I'll do another resolution on that specific language, if that's what you guys wanna do.
I think we should try that. I don't-
We have to- I'm not trying to create any problems or anything else, but-
We gotta go back to our board.
Does his board have to concur first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because ultimately, whatever we're short, we would want RPC to reimburse the county.
Well, I think you get your, and I, but, but I think you get your bids, and then we can all sit down and talk about, here's what it is, if you get a bid for three-hundred thousand, whoo, we're done. There's nothing to talk about, man. If you get a bid for eighty thousand, a hundred-and-twenty thousand, a hundred-and-fifty thousand, that changes the dynamic of, okay, what are we talking about? Because RPC, if you get a fifty thousand dollar bid and you wanna take it, RPC's not gonna come up with a hundred thousand dollars. If you get a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar bid-
It's gonna be a joint effort.
Then we're talking about eight thousand dollars, maybe there's something to talk about there.
I agree. Let's go forward on that.
Or if you can, I mean-
But so far, we haven't even gotten a bid to, to know what we're dealing with.
We've never received a bid, even though-
What is our minimum right now, Todd? What is our minimum right now?
It was two and a quarter.
The last-
But it never went out.
The last, the last one is two and a quarter, but I couldn't do anything, because Jim wanted to meet with me, so.
What went out? Two-fifty?
Two-fifty the first time?
No, two-ninety.
It's the end of the group.
We've, we've sent it out, I don't know, I think we've, this'll, this would make the third or the fourth time.
But the one we actually did send, what was the lowest there? I thought it was two-fifty.
The last one was two-fifty.
Was two-fifty, was-
So the last actual time you bid was at two-fifty?
So you came down to two-twenty-five.
Right.
But I think that needs readjusted.
I will remove it and reserve the right to reject-
I agree.
If the proposals don't meet your satisfaction.
I want to do that.
And Joanne will work.
We'll have to talk, but, maybe Joanne, you can talk to, um, Jim.
I'll call him.
Find out what the actual questions that he has.
I think Jim's question is, he just wants to sell it, you know? I don't know if he has somebody, I don't think, I don't think he has anybody in mind who has told me about it, but maybe he does. He wanted to meet with me and Jim, with you, is what he wanted to do.
Okay.
He just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Todd, do you have to call a special meeting to get your board to agree with this?
I, I can, um, uh, sure.
We're probably sure. Because you don't wanna wait for another month to meet.
No, and we're heading into winter months, so we're gonna start paying all those utilities and-
I can, I can, I can call a special meeting. And I'll, I'll, you know, I'll start with Jim, of course, and I'll tell him that you were, you wanna meet with us.
Why don't you meet with Jim and Joanne, and then you guys decide on when you wanna do a special meeting? You guys can come to a conclusion, and then we can get it in line.
Okay.
And then as far as the payment in December first?
You could do a journal entry today, suspending all payments until the sale and negotiation of the sale of the property. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, if it's-
Well, you heard it right from the budget guy. It wasn't just Sabrina. Well, it's just fine.
You may be afraid of that next week, or you can add it today?
We can add it today.
Maybe just can shut this down. We wanted, we were, we brought this because we're gonna show you how these, how some of this, you know, I was hoping for Kathleen, because I don't think Kathleen's seen it yet, but we're gonna show you how these maps would work in the comp plan. I mean, there'd be static maps on, on paper, but for the public, they're gonna be killer, killer.
Let's see them.
Oh, she, now she wants to see them.
Yeah.
You've seen these already, though, I think.
A refresher.
How long is it, Todd?
What's that?
How long is it?
You, you saw this, too?
Yeah, I did, this one.
Do we have, uh, do we have the Chambers one up there? Well, let's do, this, because some people haven't seen it, I guess. So this is, okay, real quick, this is the, uh, Porch County is in the middle there, and, you know, we have all the communities along the top, and if you click on one of the communities, I don't know, pick a, pick a Aurora, I suppose, you'll, you'll zero, you'll zero in, you can click on a park, just pick a park. It'll, it'll basically tell you what's at that park, so this is, it has an address, has the activities paid past, parking, restaurants, and you can do the more information, it'll take you right to the community, you know, the community who runs the park's website. But the one thing we wanted to show you is, after we show you this, we're gonna go over and show you a couple of quick things. So it takes you to Aurora, straight to that, that park itself, so then you can, you can slide down and see all the information you wanna see on there. Let's go back to the county's site, I guess, and then, uh, if you go back to Porch County, And then if you go back to Porches County, all the activities are listed on the side, and you just pick anything you want on the. Is there anything anybody wants to see, like golf courses or something like that?
CrossFit.
What's that?
CrossFit.
CrossFit, she wants to see CrossFit. So there's the two CrossFit locations. Now show them golf.
You want to see golf.
Let's see golf.
There, so there's all the golf courses in Porches County. And it, it works like that. So then, the same kind of thing as the parks, you click on the dot, it opens up to that, you know, the business address, you know, who they are. And it opens up to the, you know, phone number, and what their, the end of the website, if they have a website. So it's really quick. So we did, when we did this in Manaway, again, more for the public, because I think you guys have heard about this. Manaway Village, we were there doing a soft launch on this, we're doing a hard launch in November twenty-first at NEOMED, writing the chambers, elected officials, and, um, the park, park folks. But when we were at Manaway Village, people were saying, I have a, I have a coffee shop, I want to be on your map. And I, I have a restaurant, I want to be on your map. And we were like, but this is a parks map, you know, what does that have to do with parks? So we went to the, we went to Streets Bros Chamber and asked for their membership directory. We go to the Streets Bros Chamber. So you go to Streets Bros Chamber, and it doesn't look like much there, because that's, that's, you know, Streets Bros and all the dots are the different members that Streets Bros has. And that's, and we have the all members clicked on there, but if you click the all members off, and then, you know, I don't know, banking, banking and financing, you can do that one. So there's the banking and, banking and financing, you can click that one off, and then, you know, the, you can do childcare, there's education and childcare, look for the down, boom. So there's where your childcare facilities are, you can do, you can do business and professional consulting, I haven't seen that one. So there's your business and professional consulting, and the same thing, you just click on it, it opens up to their address, phone number, their websites. It's really, it's really, it's, you know, you see how quick it is, it's nice, and it's pretty user friendly, so we're really excited about it. We're out right now, tonight, we have a meeting with Ravenna, the, the Jack Schaefer's left some money for historic preservation. And we're meeting, we're presenting this map to that, or this, this map idea to them about, you know, documenting all these historic structures in both the township and the city. And we can show it multiple different ways, but then if you click on the dot, we want a, a current picture of the structure, or write up about each structure. And then maybe an old-timey picture of what the structure looked like way back when, as part of that process. I mean, there's two hundred of those structures in Ravenna and Ravenna City, so we're really excited about that. We've got a whole bunch of, we're meeting, we've been meeting and talking with the Ohio History Connection, you know, and we've also been talking with the state and Office of Tourism, so.
You know, Todd, this could really take off. Did you get any calls from Nevco members after you presented?
I have, yes.
I, I thought, because I got a lot of comments.
Did you?
Yes.
No, this is, this is great, and actually, you've also received interest from out of county, from other chambers.
Other. Yeah, this is still considered a draft, and I, right now, I have burbles for about forty thousand dollars of the work.
Yeah.
So that's pretty nice, it's still a draft.
And what will the annual cost, cost to keep this up, and who's going to be updating it, to make sure that the information?
So a couple of things with that, the parks, let's go back and talk about the parks. So with the parks, we, how we have this data set up, is we have it by, each community has like an Excel spreadsheet, if you think of it that way. And across the top is all the different activities, and then across the one side, and I might have this backwards, because I have it set up. It might be the parks up here, and the activity's here, but all the parks are here, and then you just check the boxes of what's in those parks, and then it'll just come up that way. And then if they have a new park, they can add, add new parks on there, and they can just check their boxes of what's going to be there. Or let's say the, the park they have, they added something, so we add those things, or they took something off, you know? So that's pretty easy. The chambers is also relatively easy, because we're primarily working with the chambers. And so we're, they're basically feeding us the information, I think we're going to do that on a monthly.
I was going to say, would that be a subscription line?
Yeah, so we're, yeah, so we don't know how to price this, we're not trying to get rich, but, you know, so we're doing a really.
You need to cover your costs, though, Todd.
We are, I think we are.
Oh, I think we will.
We will cover our costs, but, you know, it's same, and there will be costs for maintenance, because we do have, once a month, they're going to be asking us to add and drop people, whoever, add and drop. And, and, you know, we have to make sure everything's working, et cetera, et cetera. We also will have a cost, because right now, what we need is a landing page. We need a place for people to know where this is, and we've talked to one consulting firm, marketing consulting firm, I think they wanted roughly forty thousand dollars for the first year. I'm like, wait a minute. Yeah, exactly. And two thousand, almost two thousand dollars a month after that. So we're, we're going to explore some other options on that, but, but that landing page is important, because you can't find these maps unless you go to the Esri site, which is the GIS mapping site. So we need a place where they can go to someplace that's Porches County, blah, blah. Now, back to the, and so how people are going to find this, so definitely we'll have this on the different chambers, but this, this map, those different tabs of all the communities. We're giving this to all the communities to put on their own websites. I think Deerfield may be the only one that doesn't have a website, but we're giving it to all of them, and they can post it on there, so their, their own constituents can find it. And then we were talking, you know, we've been, I've been kicking around an idea of like putting like magnets, refrigerated magnets about it, and putting that in the sewer bills and stuff like that. Water bills at the local, you know, even the cities.
Just a living, yeah.
Yeah.
Because for people that aren't members of the chamber, which is a lot of residents, that, that would be a great place to start.
Yeah, so I think that would be a good thing, that'd be, you know, those magnets aren't very expensive, and, you know, I don't know what the cost would be to us to ask the cities and, and the water resources to put those in there, but I think it'd be good. So we have, it's all about marketing, so that's why I turned it into tourism, you know, that's why Office Tourism develops into it. I mean, like, what we do with, for this historic structure, it's going to be a great community thing. It's like a one-time thing, and then there would be some maintenance here and there on those, but it's really not, there's not going to be a build of the city every year, you know, to maintain.
So Todd, Todd Brad, you guys do the billing for water resources, correct? So depending on, I'm sure, the size and the weight of the magnet, how hard would it be to put those in our water system?
It was not a problem to get it in. We, we can get a little stuff up to tangible, so.
Okay.
All right.
What, what cost would you think?
Generally, it's just the increased postage.
Okay.
Sometimes if we require folding and whatnot, there's an extra fee. And for something like a magnet, it may be that there would be an extra fee to set the machine up, so that it tucks it in. You know, it's all machine-driven, you put in a big slot and the machine tucks it in, but those are typically the minimum.
Okay, okay. So just so you know.
Okay, that's good. It's not a per item fee.
There you go.
All right.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you, guys. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you.
Now I got to bump your, sorry about that. Should I just leave this open, this one, for him, so he doesn't have to move?
Go on ahead.
Do you want us to leave that open?
You want us to just leave it open?
Yeah, go on ahead.
I think nature still.
Oh, my arm's still in there.
Okay, Dan, now go.
There you go.
Kayle, you were supposed to bring the popcorn, what happened?
Next time, we'll remember next time.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay, next we have like Todd.
In for budget discussions, I guess, to Joanne and Jim. Stop, wait, I'm forgetting a thing. Your own departments, I believe, have a budget request, at least I have a budget request on behalf of your departments. Here it goes, employment, so we can go into executive session for the purposes of employment.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to go into executive session for G one, for the employment of a public employee.
And second, we're calling Sabrina.
Yes.
Yes.